Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the work session of the Interveste Board of Trustees. It is October 4th, 2023, and the time is 6 o'clock. So I will turn this over, I think, to Philip. Are you leading the discussion?
Okay, so yeah, so we're having a work session with a couple of our advisory boards this evening. This is a pretty standard process for us during budget season to hear from the advisory boards. The board has received the first couple of draft budgets, complete budgets. So typically, this information is supportive of what you have seen from staff. And that gives an opportunity for the advisory boards to speak directly to the board. And the board can ask questions. And if there's any takeaways from the work session, we'll have the budget public hearing later tonight. We can discuss during then or even trustee staff interactions. So but feel free to ask staff, especially the liaison department heads to these advisory boards' questions if they come up as well.
Thank you, Philip.
You bet.
So should we start with the recreation?
What do you think, Mackenzie?
That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, I'm Danielle Ryan. I'm a volunteer with the Rec Advisory Board.
My name's Mackenzie Lyle.
So our Rec Advisory Board mission and statement, we're a volunteer group that leads zones between the community, the Rec Department and town government to bring recreational programming, facility maintenance and development, and new events to our amazing town. You can read the really fine details there if you want to. Rec members and staff, you know most of the staff members, hopefully there's our volunteers. Programming in 2023, we had a number of successes. We offered 41 programs throughout the winter, summer, and fall season. We added a new program, Culinary Creations, and the Wild Roots Nature Classes for the very, very young kids, year six, I believe, and Achieve Social, those things with kids with developmental and different learning abilities and that kind of thing. And then Women's 4-on-4 Basketball was another new program offering. We had over 2,000 programming registrations, and we hired a new program assistant, Jack Spady, and hired 30 seasonal different employees. Special events in 2023, we permitted 49 one-time events and eight recurring events. We gained $12,500 in revenue, up from the $5,500 from last year. We transitioned to a simplified online application process and also simplified the process for various already occurring multi-year events where they could apply for a three-year application so they can meet, you know, have a quick meeting to kind of re-go over everything, but they don't have to go through the entire process every single year. And then every three years, they re-up their application. And we also purchased additional event equipment to help alleviate stress on this and that kind of thing. Facilities in 2023, the Community Center had 690 reservations. We gained $8,265 in Community Center revenue and $8,730 in park rental revenue. We replaced the Aspen Room, and I say "we," the Rec Department, I'm sorry. But the replace the Aspen Room furnaces with more energy-efficient options, streamlined the rental process with the facility assistant as the point of contact, and coordinated the Pump Track Rehab project. Capital projects in 2023 that we achieved, or the Rec Department achieved, the Rec Department secured over $1.25 million for the Billy Cordova Memorial Park project, funded the Pocket Wave 2.0 project and secured contractors for that. They were awarded the OEDAT grant for River Park Improvements, completed the Whipple Trail Restoration and River Park Kiosk, and completed several Legacy Stage improvements over in McPhelony Park, and began developing the plan for the Ball Field Drainage Project.
So just to back up a little bit, now that we told you everything that we accomplished in 2023, just a quick 30,000-foot view of how we see Rec in this town moving forward. One of our biggest things that we're just starting to talk about is how we can secure funding when we don't come ask you guys. So we are starting to have those conversations with the attorney and figuring out how we can do that. We get the Conservation Trust Fund, but now with the amount of people in this town and the amount of programs that we offer and the amount of parks that we have now built, we just don't have the cash. So we're talking sales tax, you know, going to the voters, looking for sales tax, potentially a lodging tax, maybe a mill levy on a property tax, something like that, even maybe a special district for a Rec district. So we're just kind of starting to dabble our feet in those conversations and see where we can secure some additional funding, besides coming to you every year. The other large thing that we are really wanting to do this year is get a full comprehensive master plan. We have also dabbled in this. We've done facility reviews. We've done the River Park Master Plan. But we have never really done like a full parks, trails, full comprehensive plan of all of our parks and facilities. So we would love to start that this year. We just feel like with the town growing and the people that we're trying to serve, we really need to get long-term and short-term goals in place to service all these people. So that's what we're really going for this year. One of our biggest missions is not only growing the program and growing the parks and services and facilities that we have, but keeping, maintaining the stuff we do have, right? So obviously, everything's aging. You're sitting in a room that is doing such. So that's kind of constantly on our brain, is how can we keep the parks and services that we have up and running? Another thing that we just want to mention, we have had this, and this goes along with the master plan, but we'd really love to tie in streets and trails for more, just more safe travels for pedestrians and cyclists. We are getting bombarded with new developments right now. I think we've seen maybe half a dozen come across the Rec Board this year. It has been insane. And one of the things that we are constantly thinking is connectivity. Trails to streets to bike lanes, and as this town gets denser, we want to, you know, not rely on cars as much and get safe routes for kids to school and that kind of thing. So we would love to see a full master plan with streets that it connects to trails and do a full plan. The carbon at street development that we just did a recommendation on, we asked for a bike lane through there to connect South Main to Railroad, and they said the streets weren't wide enough. So that kind of stuff, we want to just get ahead of and not have bicycles on sidewalks and really create a plan for the town that really can connect everybody safely to all these places that we have. So that's the 30,000-foot view. And as we dive in here, we have some carryover stuff from, oh, sorry, wrong slide, operating requests. This is definitely more department than board-related, but we are just constantly growing. So we are hoping that Annie will become full-time from her part-time facility for all the extra tasks that they need doing. And then just an increase in all sorts of wages and rates and all of that. So seasonal wages and contract labor has gone up. We have increased our fine arts programming, so the budget for that has gone up. And then just the normal upkeep of professional fees for starting to do more grant writing and first-time employees for all those seasonal employees we hire. The one thing that has gone down is our sports and athletic department. Now that we are not doing the registration for pickleball, that piece of the budget has gone down just a tidge. So budgets don't ever go down without we mentioning it. Okay, so we have a couple of carryover projects from 2023, the biggest of which is the Billy Cordova Park. The total cost of that project is about 1.2, and we need $110,000 left. So we are hoping to secure that through grants, and we will be breaking ground, hopefully in the spring. The Pocket Wave 2.0 remodel was also delayed because of water issues with increase in water. And then we couldn't delay, we couldn't extend the permit because of fish, so that will happen next fall. That one's fully funded at $177,000. The OEDAT projects for the River Park improvements, the bathroom upgrades, the ramp, or sorry, not the ramp, the bridge, and those kind of projects is also fully funded. And we're waiting for a couple more pieces to fall into place there, so that one's fully funded at $110,000. And then the lovely ball field, which again, with our mission of keeping things maintained, that we have had drainage problems for years over there, and would love to get that fixed and turf refixed, fixed up and all that good stuff. So that one's pricey at 900 grand, and we are looking to fund 830,000 of that through grants. Then our annual request for the $5,000 for the Whitewater Park, that's just ongoing maintenance that is matched by the community. That is in reserves for when we need it for the big projects that we do every three to five years or so. And that brings us to our current asks for this budget season. Again, like I said, the master plan is our biggest thing so that we really have a good plan for short and long-term goals moving forward. That priced out at $175,000, we are asking 50 grand from the town and hope to fund the rest, the remaining $125,000 in grants. That should just help us lead all of these other projects. The second thing is the McGinnis Gym floor. That is an amazing project between the school and watershed, and we are going to get use of that. So we would love to contribute to that and do their floor for them for 15 grand. The rodeo grounds is one of our biggest facilities that constantly needs upkeep. So we are asking for 30,000 for lighting upgrades. And farther down in the priority list, we're also asking for new bucking chutes that cost $15,000. The Walton Loop Stage 2 is on there. That is a $48,000 ask. That's going to connect the tennis courts to the existing trail, and that's our ADA trail, which is why that one's so pricey. I already mentioned the rodeo grounds bucking chutes. The pinion room needs to be repainted and recarpeted. That's going to cost us $37,000. The second-to-last request is just about the more program, the more people see us out and about with our buses and our trailers. So we're looking to wrap those so people can really just see how much we're out and about driving people around to all of these programs that we do. So that's 6,000 to get that done. And finally, the Legacy Stage, we are asking for another 27,000. And that is mainly comprised of a shade structure. There's also a ramp in there, some benches, and potentially some lighting. So thank you, first of all, for even listening to our requests. And thank you, guys, for doing what you do here, too. You have any questions?
I have a question.
Please go ahead, Danielle.
With the comp plan that you were speaking about, it sounds like you'll, I'd assume you'll be working with the Trails Advisory Board on that as well. And we haven't gotten to their thing yet, but is there a way to share costs across that, I assume?
Yeah, Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the price of the whole thing. And we are totally trying to do parks and trails and have it be completely comprehensive. I didn't actually touch on this, but that's also something that we just want to do as a board and as a department, is collaborate more with the Trails Board and the Parks Department, talk with them when subdivision requests come up and that kind of thing. Yes, we want it to be wholly comprehensive and be the whole kit and caboodle.
So that would almost be like the two of you teaming up on that, so.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
So with driving your bus, driving people around in the bus, I assume that we're properly insured for that?
We are.
And the floor, the McGinnis Gym floor, are we also still paying for that Darren Patterson floor upkeep?
We paid for it one time, lucky tonight. Yeah, so we have a shared use agreement with them, and then we did give them a one time. We redid all their lines. Was that last year? Two years ago?
Two years ago.
We redid that floor.
So in general, we're not paying?
Not a yearly thing, no. That was just a one time.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Questions from trustees? Go ahead, Danielle.
For the ball field, the turf project, does that have a lot of maintenance and upkeep once it's installed? Or is the cost maybe just to get it in, and then is it pretty easily managed after that?
Yeah, I believe that the upkeep of that is just going to be what we're currently.
It'll be less than what we're currently paying for maintenance. So different equipment and things like that. But once it's installed, you know, much lower costs than the water, the mowing that we're currently experiencing. Typically, you know, over the lifespan of a turf field, you know, when you put in turf, it kind of evens out whether it's grass or turf over the lifespan, you know, just. But you do, that maintenance is important to make sure you get the full lifespan out of your turf and instead of, you know, having to redo it three years before you're supposed to.
And we'll get added use out of it because our dugouts won't be flooded, right?
Thank you, sir, this one.
Questions, everybody?
I was asking, literally replace the carpet in here. I didn't think it'd been that long ago.
It hasn't. It was 2018.
Is there any way to lighten up the rodeo grounds?
Of the lighting?
Lighten up the lighting.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, for that one, we basically kind of took the costs we had. And it's similar lighting upgrades that were needed at the softball field a few years ago. You know, they have the old halogen fixtures that they can't get the replacement bulbs for anymore. So it'd be kind of doing the same process we did at the softball field, going in, replacing those with LEDs. And yeah, because, yeah, we can't replace the bulbs anymore. So lights go out, they can't be fixed. So it's a similar process that we'd be doing at the rodeo grounds. Sean's mentioned there might need some electrical upgrades, but he's hoping to do those through just the operating budget remainder for 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was just looking at the Legacy Stage item. You have 27,000 in there, and then the proposal that we've been given also from Chris Martin and Tom Mollings that are today, puts that under the Parks 24,000 request there. Can you clarify there where that, I mean, if the money materializes at all, where it would come from?
Oh, I mean, ultimately, it's coming out of the general fund.
That's all, it's all coming from the same buckets. So differentiating between parks and Rec, and that doesn't.
Same bucket.
That's more for the operations and the execution of those projects is the labeling there.
Okay, thanks.
I do have one question about the Ball Field Turf project. Calling that a carryover project?
So it'd be using the funds from Drainage as the match for future grants.
Got it.
So how does this, what we got from Chris Martin, how does this compare with what we were planning to have for capital improvements?
Compare?
Try to compare it.
Are you speaking of the letter here?
Yeah.
It doesn't compare to our current budget because it's not in the current budget. This was received today.
Yeah, so this is all new.
This is all new. So the next presentation of the budget in November, it'll show up on the list. And thanks to the Rec Advisory Board and staff for prioritizing, I'll indicate priority. And then if we have enough money from general fund, it could show as funded. If not, then it'll show as not funded. And then the board can weigh in on prioritization at that time compared to the other list of things.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pretty tight budget. Other comments or questions for the Rec Advisory Board?
You all accomplished a lot this year with the Rec Department, of course.
Yeah, they always do. Thank you very much for having us. Thank you.
Now we're going to hear from the Airport Department.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Corray. I think I've worked with most of you in one capacity or another tonight, representing the Airport Board as the chair of that advisory body. Jack, I'll take a minute to defer to you if you had any lead-in comments.
No, the slide that's presented in front of you is what we presented a couple of weeks back. Just so as Dan speaks to some of the items, you can look up and.
Sure. Hopefully, this will be more of a cue for your questions. I'm not going to spend too much time speaking to the slide. I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to provide the board with some context around the unique asset of 2024 budget and just develop the theme that the things that you're seeing in terms of those unique items are designed to maintain current capabilities and enable future opportunities. The thinking being that the funding that we're going to put against these requests in '24 is what we need to just sustain operations and maintain our margins of safety. First among those things would be the pay scale increase that's being funded for the line technicians and the airport ops technician. The reasons for that were explained in the budget presentation, so I won't get into that. But I wanted to speak to the importance of retention in terms of the cost savings of keeping the folks that we have trained and experienced now and driving home the point that in a dynamic environment like the airport ramp, a lot of times, the safe decision, safe operation comes down to good judgment. Good judgment comes from training and experience, and we've already invested in that in the line text that we have. So this is a move to recognize that, retain them, continue to build that judgment, capitalize on the judgment and experience that's been developed rather than the constant turnover that erodes the safety margins on the ramp. So I really wanted to share that mentality with you today and open up questions directed at that. So I'll pause there if anybody wants to speak to that one directly before we talk about the Fuel Island and North Ramp Rehab. Okay, one other thought on the line technicians and pay scale increases, the reduction in hours will tend to offset some of that expenditure. And then as the line techs, for whatever reason, reduce hours on their own, it would be somewhat mitigated. So we can speak to that in more detail if needed. Referencing the request in 2024 for the matching funds against FAA and CDOT money for the design phase of the North Ramp, the big tie into that, aside from the pavement surface needing its rehabilitation, would be the relocation of the Fuel Island, which is a multi-year big project. And the number that you're seeing in front of you in the 2024 budget, again, is just the local match for the grants that have been enabled the design phase. But the context I wanted to share with you tonight, our fuel is stored in those tanks that we can all see from the highway or going out towards the rodeo grounds. Those are going to need to be replaced much sooner rather than later. We're well past the design service life of those tanks. As long as they continue to pass inspection, they're safe to operate. But with a rehab, replacement, design in progress, funded and in progress, it would be a lot easier to request waivers for continued operations from regulatory agencies should the need arise to bridge the gap between tank replacement and a new fuel farm, new fuel delivery system. And I have to say, that is our biggest source of revenue from the airport, is fuel sales, followed shortly by testing, which dried up this year. If that came up in the presentation, Jack?
Yeah.
So we can, we can see right now what it would look like to rely as heavily as we do on fuel while we work on diversifying our revenue sources. But that's not going to happen anytime in the near term. So the importance of protecting our fuel revenue by ensuring that we're positioned to continue delivery well into the future is paramount. And this is just the first step in that multi-year process to ensure safe deliveries of general aviation and jet A fuel can continue. Details, questions on that particular point? All right. Lastly, the special ask, and Jack, correct me if I get too far off the reservation here, but the additional $12,000 that was directed at the upgraded radios, new radios, a tug for aircraft movement while the aircraft itself is empowered, and a ground power unit. The context I wanted to provide the board in here is these are basic services that any aircraft would expect at an airport to handle their ground movements, handle their arrival and departure, coordinate with the line technicians on their way in and the way out, and then provide a power source to operate the aircraft when it's not under its own power. Again, this is something that we can do right now, but the expense to maintain what we have is going to exceed the replacement costs. So if we can find more reliable units to, again, sustain the level of service that our customers are used to now, that keeps the door open to future opportunities and growth. And on that idea, it's kind of nebulous, but we're all kind of positioning as the board to go in any direction but biased towards growth and accommodating growth until we can see what the community wants in the next version of the comp plan. Absent that guidance, we're proceeding in accordance with the airport master plan and business plan. And these things allow us that opportunity to provide the baseline expectation level of service. I'll pause right there. I'm joined by Dennis Seep and Taylor Albrecht that had some public comment to add on, both members of the Airport Board. So I'd like to yield the floor to them at this time, and then I'll be available for your questions to follow.
Yeah, I would just add that, kind of piggybacking on what Dan said about the staffing. I think one of the things that's real critical, not only that we retain staffing, but if you look at the uniqueness of all the airports, and especially this airport, because it has a very unique feature ahead of it, and it requires that we have skilled, trained employees to meet that. And one of the things about an airport, especially this size, it's almost like a town within a town. All of the skill sets that are required to run that airport are the same kind of skill sets that you have here. So I just was saying that when you're weighing, when you're weighing employees, I mean, these, these people, these few people that run this airport are very, very important. that runs airport are very, very important.
And sort of following on that, I've been flying into this airport since about two thousand six. And one of the coolest things about it is that the reputation in the general aviation community, particularly along the front range, is stellar. They love the service and the friendliness. And we even have good crew cards, don't we? Which is a, a, a real joke in the, in the community. And the way that you sustain that kind of thing for decades is to have people who really enjoy what they're doing, doing it well and have been there for years as demonstrated by Jill and now Jack and Ted. And so the three linemen that are there right now are an absolute pleasure to deal with as a customer and as board member. So I echo that.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was everything for the prepared comments. Hopefully to enable conversation and questions if there are none. I'm, I'm happy to yield the floor. Otherwise, I'm at your disposal.
Yeah. Dan and Taylor and Dennis, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. Really appreciate it. I was just going to ask if you could share some of, some of what we've talked about in our advisory board meetings about the possibilities for revenue enhancement. I know it's not going to happen tomorrow, but just what directions could we go if, if we grow?
Absolutely. The, the easiest answer in front of us is to capitalize on the natural increased interest. Our jet operations, turbine operations of large aircraft year over year have gone up continuously, even predating the COVID boom. So just the interest in the valley and the ability of the business aviation community to access it is driving jet A sales. So the big question for the community is more operations isn't always necessarily better if that's not what the community wants. It will be more revenue, but that's the kind of the guidance we're looking for in the comp plan. And to, to your question, if we want to grow revenue, that's the fastest, easiest way is to do things that encourage more jet A sales, which means design our capital improvement projects and execute them to be more friendly to business aviation and turbine aircraft. So that's, that's your biz jets over the piston propeller driven aircraft. Outside of that, the next biggest opportunity in front of us would be to capitalize on the ground lease buyouts that we have done in terms of hangar development. There's always a demand for hangar space in the aviation community. And I think during the winter months, we don't have de-ice capability at our airport. And, and Jack can probably attest to how quickly with that increase in jet traffic, our heated executive hangar fills up and all the services that go with renting that hangar space. So to the extent that we encourage development of private additional hangars on that land that the town and the airport now controls, the ground leases that come with that would be the next soonest place we would see revenue increases. Another thing that we would want to continue to encourage would be testing. The helicopters have absolutely been a boon, both in terms of the jet A sales, but also in terms of the support the airport provides them. It's then billed to the companies like Boeing and Augusta Westland. They've, both, both of those companies have just closed out large airframe certification processes. So that accounts for this year's dip. But to Taylor's point, reputation is everything. And we have a reputation in that community now for being able to find a way to yes and provide professional support to that level of operation. Again, what does the community want? But when it talks about other opportunities for rotor wing or even heavy lift unmanned aerial vehicles. So your, your drone type unmanned systems that may want to conduct the same kind of testing that the helicopters have done, positioning ourselves to be friendly to that. Those would be the three biggest things in the very near term.
Thanks. Jack, anything you got?
Yeah, I, I, I guess the other, the final piece of the puzzle for probably long-term revenue, trying to find a, a turnkey operation, a business at the airport, you know, that would, you know, sustain like a bigger business. So especially during the winter months when we, when the airport gets slower, if you had a, a sustainable business going on, that would definitely help the revenue and, you know, operations at the airport.
Yeah. To, to add a little bit of detail to that point, which is absolutely correct. It needs to be an aviation centered business. What we don't want to do is turn inadvertently turn airport property into a business park or an industrial park. It's, it's not really the intent. So businesses that provide support to aviation would be on airport property. Ancillary businesses that want close by access would be on the land side of the fence. But the direct line from A to B is when we encourage that bigger turbine traffic to come in, they're buying more fuel. That creates the demand for the kind of anchor business that Jack's talking about to open a large hangar, have to hire employees to support the increased operations, whether it be de-icing services in a, in this additional hangar, not owned by the town, private investment or avionics, those kinds of things that just sustain operations so they can trust that if they do run into a problem here, it can be fixed here. And it's an easier decision for them to operate into Buena Vista versus Gunnison or any other comparable regional airport in central Colorado.
Gina? How many, how many people on average in, I guess, summertime will, will come through the airport?
That's an interesting number because of the way we count the people that come into the airport. So regardless of if they arrive as a passenger or crew, if there is a body that passes through the door, that's counted, is it not, Jack?
Yes.
And is, is the person using the airport. So we would have to drill down through those totals to, to get you the number that I think you're looking for. Jack, do you have anything that you feel comfortable shooting from the hip with? Because I.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, that's a little, it's a little.
We have, we have that data set. It's just not parsed out, I think, in a way that would be helpful in, in this discussion. I, I would say it would not be a particularly impressive number in this compared to what businesses in town see as far as headcount go through because it's so specialized to serve the folks that are accessing the unique services at the airport. But it is an absolute growth opportunity and, and I, I, I'm glad you asked that frankly, because it, it gives us the opportunity to realize that is the gateway to all the other businesses that, I, I mean, they don't buy food at the airport. They don't buy lodging at the airport. But as soon as they land, that revenue is coming into town in a way that's not measured directly at our, like we can measure our fuel receipts.
The, the only reason why I was curious to, just because of, you brought up like having a business at the airport and I was just wondering, how many people pass through? How many people could utilize? And I know, like you said, it should be aviation focused, you know, it has to make sense. But I'm just, my wheels are turning. Fast forward.
So if I may, I, we, in my report that you'll get from me every month, we have those numbers. So we track two sets of numbers. One that for physical people playing, uh, getting on and off the airplane. But we also track the people that are coming to the airport. So maybe three people get off the airplane, three more people come to meet them. We also have events at the airport where all of a sudden that weekend, instead of just a dozen people on a plane, I have a hundred people at the airport because we have an event. Like for example, just you'll see tonight, we have just for September, a thousand people passed through the airport. And to date, we're at seventy, almost seven thousand people gone through that airport. And as Dan said, none of them are staying there. They're all coming down town, shopping, hotels, wrapping.
That was year to date, Jack, at seven thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and our average, you know, it would ebb and flow with the, for a season and the good weather. One opportunity, and, and this would require a lot of coordination with outside agencies, but I mentioned the lack of a de-ice capability. So to the extent that we have more heated hangars that can protect airplanes from the weather, that would be a great business that we would encourage more operations during the winter months and, and kind of be able to market that. But that requires encouraging private investment to develop a facility like that. Which all starts with, are we doing our due diligence and providing the baseline services that are accounted for in this budget?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Taylor, Dennis, any additional thoughts prompted by this discussion about future opportunities or?
All kinds.
Okay. So we have a few.
You can't give me a bullet because I'll go on forever, but, but, but I do want to speak to, to one thing. I'm wearing the corporate colors. It ties into the rec department as well. I'm president of Mountain West UAS, which is nonprofit five oh one C three organization founded six years ago this month in cooperation with the rec department and with the trustees. We're the ones that are doing the weird stuff out at the rodeo grounds with those white, excuse me, white bucket stands and the big shipping container and shade shelters and such. Because unmanned aircraft systems is the most rapid growing area of aviation. And it's not just the little drone that we donated to Buena Vista Middle School today or the one that I flew up north to do a real estate video. These, they're, I don't know if you've heard of Aircraft Mobility? I was reading an article that in Los Angeles, there are five companies that are, are moving forward very rapidly with air taxi. There's no reason why Buena Vista with its already great reputation as a high altitude testing center can't capitalize on the things going on in unmanned aircraft systems. And the board recently adopted some language to help us go out and say, in a sense, we're open for business. So we'd really like to see in the near future is that business kind of that's unmanned aircraft oriented using the facilities that we have here in order to further that. And we're working also to create that foundation with the high schools and the middle schools to maybe create a labor force that's ready to go in and help those businesses.
Thank you.
Any other questions for airport? Now, you did a really good presentation, I think it was last year, about the value that the airport brings to the community.
We'll have another one.
Yeah, good. That's a really good presentation. Thanks, Sue, for being so involved in the airport.
Well, they still won't let me fly a plane. I don't know what's up.
You got to go in a helicopter.
Yeah, I did.
I was like standing it. Okay, great. You guys have questions or comments or?
I've never been in a helicopter.
I just had to stand in one, but it's one of the testing ones. It was quite cool.
Just put it out there.
It was a helicopter that they actually did surgery or they could do surgery or one like it did surgery over.
I could have a cardiac surgery room.
Yeah.
Inside the helicopter.
Wow.
That's pretty, pretty cool. But yeah, we didn't get to go for a ride.
Also don't want the evening to go by as, as we talked about, Jack and Taylor was very complimentary in the staff. But Chandra isn't here tonight. She was, was able to be here, but she's a, she's a solid rock out there as well.
Great. So I noticed that Dr. Gibb was here. That's, is he going to be on later or should we do his?
I think he'll speak in public comment related to BB Strong dinner contribution.
Okay. So I guess we're ready to wrap this up. Have a little break, stand up, the round. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate all your time and efforts with the airport.